Welcome to the candidate forum for Sunnyvale City Council for District Two. My name is Elaine Manley. I am the co-president at the League of Women Voters of Cupertino and Sunnyvale, and I will be the moderator this evening. Next slide, please. And if I may ask, Alyssa, if you'd like to have your camera on as well. I see Jim is on camera, so thank you very much. We'll be talking with the candidates shortly. Just wanted to give you a couple pieces of information before we formally start that section. This is a Zoom webinar, as you see, and the only people that will be on the screen are the candidates and myself. The virtual attendees are muted and the session is being recorded, and we will put a link to that recording on our website at LWVCS.org/election-forums. We should have it up within about forty-eight hours. All right, next slide. So what is the League of Women Voters? Well, we've been around since nineteen twenty. It's a, it's a very long time membership. It started with the founding of the women's right to vote, and it is a nonpartisan organization. We have men and women as members. We've kept the name League of Women Voters because it's such a long history, and we don't support political parties or candidates. We'd like to provide a platform for people to come and learn about the candidates. We do have two separate corporations with the League. The first one is Voter Service or Education. Tonight is an example of that. The second one is when we take action and advocacy after studying something in depth. The League could decide to take a position for or against a ballot measure, but we don't mix the two. So tonight is all about the education, and we're delighted to have people join us tonight. Do you want to point out, all of the League members are volunteers, so should you like to help us with these services for the community, please join us. Thank you. All right, so this next slide is talking about Voter's Edge. This used to be the website that we were using in California to give you valid information, and we have moved everything to votefor11.org. That is a national website, so people from any city and state can actually use the same website. So you can find how to register to vote on this site. You can check your voter registration, and more importantly, you can find out exactly what is on your ballot. You click that box. It says, "Find out what's on your ballot." You go to the state of California. You type in your address, and then it will show you the candidates and the ballot measures that are on your specific ballot. So it is a great resource for you. Just wanted to point that out. Now, in California, everyone is vote by mail, and the ballots have come out. I've received mine. I'm guessing yours, or if you haven't received it, it's in the mail. It's, it's coming to you shortly. When you are done with your selections and voting, you can either mail it back. There's no postage necessary. You can put it in a Dropbox, and you can put it in, you can take it to a vote center. So you have several ways to return your ballots. The Register of Voters has a great website, ROV for Register of Voters, so ROVservices.sccgov.org. That's for accounting. That's all of the information about the election. You can check your registration there. You can find the vote center. You can track your ballot. And if you make a mistake on your ballot, you can get a replacement ballot directly through the registrar or at a vote center. And speaking on vote centers, let's talk a little bit about those. If you go to the next slide, please. Great. So at the vote center, as I mentioned, you can go and vote. You can drop off your ballot. You can get a replacement ballot. They also have ballots in up to fourteen languages. So if you need a different language, the vote center will be able to help you with that resource. And now, an important part is you want your ballot to be counted, so please be sure to remember to use black or blue ink only. Remember to complete both sides of the ballot as best you can. If there's something you don't want to vote on, you don't have to vote, but at least give, take a look at it and decide for yourself what you want to vote on. And very important, at the end, when you complete your ballot, you put it back in the envelope. You want to sign your name the same way you did on your driver's license, and make sure you put the date on the envelope as well. So important part on the envelope. That will help you get your, your votes counted. Let's see here. I think we're ready for the next slide. So where is District Two? If you are not certain what district you're in, you see here, there is a link you can go to. Couple of different ways to get there. Once again, the Register of Voters website, for sure. You type in your address, and it will tell you what district. You can see the map of the district lines, and if you live on the border, it may, you may not be sure, and so this website can help clarify that for you. Only the people that live in District Two may select their District Two council member. So we are delighted to have District Two voting, voter-eligible people attending this webinar. So let's get started. We have two candidates for District Two. We have Alyssa Cisneros, and we have Jim Davis. And I just want to point out their websites. I'll say this more than once because it's a way to learn more about them. So Alyssa has a website, Alyssa-Cisneros.com. You can learn more about her. And Jim has his email, so you can speak directly with him through his email. But this way, you've got some names and faces. I want to explain a little bit about the format for the forum. So our candidates have graciously agreed to the format and our ground rules. And I'm going to go over the questions that we gathered in advance. We received a lot of great questions, and we consolidated them by topic, and that way, we can cover more topics. So each question will have a response time of sixty or ninety seconds. And we have a timekeeper that's going to help the candidates have visual signals so that they know as their time, they can paste their responses, as you can see on the screen, and then when time is up, the candidates have agreed they will stop when you see the stop sign. If you choose to reference a recording of this forum per the rules of the Federal Election Commission, do please always give the link to the entire forum. You can direct people to the wording and specific words you want to see at the time of it, but you want to make sure you give the link to the entire forum, please. Lastly, I want to mention, each candidate has three rebuttal times, that if they want to rebut something that the other candidate said, they can raise their hand. They will, they've already discussed. They will not go off topic with it. They'll stay true to the topic and just answer whatever they felt they needed to say about that. So before we started this forum, we did provide the first and last questions to the candidates. All of the rest of the questions will be new for them. They have not heard them from us before. So I want to extend a warm welcome to the candidates. Thank you so much for joining us, Alyssa and Jim. When we drew the names to see who would get to go first for the first question, Jim Davis came up first, so we will give you the question first, Jim, and then Alyssa will give you a chance to give your statement as well. So Jim, that first question is, why are you qualified to be our council member for District Two? You have ninety seconds.
Well, I have a long history in government, starting back in the nineteen seventies when I was first got a job as a police officer in the city of San Jose. And then in nineteen eighty-six, I moved over here to the city of Sunnyvale, where I was told, you can't do both jobs. You can't be both a police officer and a firefighter. Well, I proved them wrong. That's what my, my experience with the city of Sunnydale is for twenty-six years. So, you know, I know the government. I know the people who are involved in, in the leadership positions in a government, and I know how the government works. In two thousand and eleven, I was elected to the city council and served for five years. And during that time, I got a very good insight in regards to how the community works, how we can direct our information to the people of our community to make them aware of what's going on and how to solve problems. Then I was, I was very much involved in a whole variety of different jobs and responsibilities. I was on the Value Transportation Association Board. I was on the VTA Board, and I served on A-BAG. So I have a, an extensive background in government and what's happening in our county, and I'm looking forward to serving my people again.
Thank you. Alyssa Cisneros.
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, thank you for hosting this forum. Getting information to voters is extremely important. I am the current incumbent. I was elected in twenty twenty, and I did so because I felt that this is how I could use my skills to best make people's lives tangibly better. And this is a great application for my master's degree in public policy, my longtime work as a policy analyst with SVLG for one, but also working for the ACLU of Northern California, so a broad spread of experience there. I have the proven ability to deliver on issues that impact residents of District Two, Sunnyvale as a whole, and regionally focusing on the issues that are directly related to how people live their lives. I bring perspectives that have been traditionally absent from council, namely, I'm the first Latina to have been elected. I'm the first openly LGBTQ person to be elected, and I'm also somebody who has experienced poverty and actually teen parent, teen parenting in the city of Sunnyvale. So I believe that my experience reflects a broader aspect of the community than ever before. I've successfully worked with our legislators to deliver additional resources to Sunnyvale, and I have various initiatives and policies that are currently in the works and on track to success, so I hope to be reelected.
Thank you. All right, so you'll go first on this next question. Alyssa, please share your top three priorities for Sunnyvale.
Absolutely. Housing, the environment, and continuing our work on addressing the issue of homelessness. And I believe these issues are intertwined in ways that we normally don't think about them, but that in some ways makes our job harder and sometimes easier. Housing, the housing crisis is something that we all know about in a lot of detail, and that's going to take very intentional work to create solutions in a market condition that we largely can't control, to both lower rents for renters and make homeownership more accessible. Protecting the environment is something that is very important. It is very hot outside in October, and there are many things the city can do to address climate change right here at home, knowing we can't solve the whole problem. And we also know that homelessness is a massive concern, even in affluent areas, much higher than the median right here in Sunnyvale, and I'm proud to have introduced and championed many of Sunnyvale's current initiatives.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, Alyssa and I share a lot of our main concerns. I am very concerned about housing, and I currently serve on the Housing and Human Services Commission. And one of my initiatives that went to council was to get the number of houses or low-cost housing that was being offered. Right now, what happens is a developer is required to provide fifteen percent of the development to a low-cost housing. And I moved and got that to twenty percent, and that's something that's before the council. And I also am very big advocate in regards to the homeless population. I was very much involved with that when I was a public safety officer and as a council member, and my third and final concern is the budget, making sure that our tax dollars are being spent in the best and most efficient ways.
Thank you. All right, so our next question, we'll start with Jim, and this is sixty seconds as well. So it says, "Sunnyvale is a great place to live, but we still have problems. How would you address issues like break-ins, theft, and illegal fireworks?"
Well, those are very, that's a very good question, and something that is close to my heart, because public safety was a part of my life for a very long time. I believe that we need to take more interest in regards to shaping our public safety department so that we have the enforcement details there to be able to handle the problems of break-ins. And the other thing that we need to take note of is the number of thefts that are being done in merchants, and where they're just going in and stealing a lot of expensive properties. And I think that, you know, we, we need to look at our budget in regards to making sure that we have quality service for our residents. And the fireworks question is a little bit tougher, because unfortunately for us to be able to do something about fireworks, we have to observe it. And so our officers are out there doing their very best, and we'll continue to do their very best. I know that for sure.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Yeah, absolutely. And first and foremost, perception and feeling of safety is extremely important, as well as the actual safety. Sunnyvale is a very, very safe city, but as you mentioned, there is room for improvement. The vast majority of our crime come from people who don't live in Sunnyvale, and therefore, this becomes a regional problem and not just a Sunnyvale-specific work. So we have a great county sheriff that partnering with him on license plate readers and other ways to involve the entire county in that effort. We have other cities that we can partner with. Something that's proven to really help is getting officers out of their vehicles and out walking in the community, building those relationships, and being able to observe what's going on in the community in, in a more personal way, also making people more comfortable to reach out to law enforcement and build a more trust in that feeling of safety within the community. But many of these problems are ongoing and something we need to address in many different ways.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so sixty seconds again. Alyssa, you will go first on this one. The, the debate on growth in housing continues in Sunnyvale. Concerns about growth include how to maintain the style of life that has drawn people to Sunnyvale. Other issues are traffic congestion, water use, tree planting, and maintenance, and more. On the other side is the real need to meet the legal state mandated growth in housing. What do you think should be done to balance all of this?
Yeah, first, I just want to say that I want to balance these issues with the fact that the median price of a one-bedroom apartment in Sunnyvale is now over thirty-five hundred dollars a month. The median price for a single-family home in Sunnyvale is over one-point-eight million, so you need to come up with four-hundred-thousand dollars to place down on the home. And I don't know about you, but I don't know a ton of people who are going to be able to do that. We need to address the housing crisis, because we are raising a generation of kids without a hometown. I'm lucky enough to have grown up in Sunnyvale, and I don't want to be the last generation able to come back and raise their families here. So we have wonderful tools to reach out to the community and be able to balance those concerns along with actually working on the housing production. And the housing we have the biggest trouble building in Sunnyvale is extremely low income. So when we're thinking about that, we're also introducing nonprofit partners into that equation, but we have limitations from state law, and we're just going to need to work through it.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, the housing issue is, is something that's not easy to solve, because quite honestly, the city of Sunnyvale doesn't build the houses. We zone our properties and allow for all kinds of different development in different areas. And I have to say that the city of Sunnyvale has taken this issue very seriously in this last year, and they have taken a good look at areas along the El Camino Real that need to be addressed. They've talked about the the centers, center where people can find retail as well as housing, and we've also adopted the Moffett Park specific plan. And Moffett Park is basically going to become a small city within a city. And we're building, we're going to build over twenty thousand housing units over there, out there in the next ten years. And if we keep the number of, of units that are affordable to the twenty percent level that I have talked about earlier, then we're going to be able to have more homes for more people.
Thank you. All right, Owen, I see you have your first rebuttal. Yes, Alyssa?
Yeah, thank you. Just really quick, as we're considering raising, raising the inclusionary limit, something that we're going to need to take into account is balancing whether, you know, we know that raising that inclusionary unit amount can disincentivize the housing actually being built, and so we're going to need to engage in a pretty rigorous study in order to create more ELI units, and actually, the best way to do that is to increase density, because then that fifteen percent means more in general, whereas, you know, if you raise the inclusionary, the total number of ELI units is typically lower.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so this next question, we'll start with Jim, and we'll talk a little bit about the village centers. So we're going to talk about the local economic contribution. So originally, village centers were supposed to provide retail to support that village. Local grocery stores and restaurants will be forced to close with the new village centers, creating this food desert. The benefit of locally-owned businesses is they normally source goods and services from other nearby businesses, and they reinvest profits locally. Whereas chain restaurants and stores may not use local sources, and their profits tend to flow outside our city. What will you do to protect and increase the number of local small grocery stores and retail stores in the neighborhood villages and nearby?
Well, I think that we're, we're lucky in many respects, because some of the village centers that we've talked about have established markets, and will, will continue to have established markets. Of course, there are other areas, like the Village Center at the intersection of Sunnyvale-Saratoga Road and Fremont, where we allowed the developer to overdevelop the townhouse market there and then offer only a small, little itty-bitty section for, for commercial development. So we have to be a little bit more cognizant in regards to what we approve. And we can also, what, we need, we've tried for twenty years to get major supermarkets to come into the north part of the city. This is our opportunity now because of the fact that we're going to be building more houses and more housing structures in the north part of the city, and hopefully that'll draw in the bigger, bigger commercial establishments.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you. This is a really challenging issue, because those village centers that currently have applications in or in process of being built, the vast majority do not have retail, because it doesn't pencil out with the density that we currently have. In order to make it feasible to have retail in village centers, we need to upzone those that don't already have active applications in or in that pre-application process. So a couple ways to go ahead and make sure that we have retail there is to look at having local retail be a community benefit, being able to subsidize some of those rent and allow those mom-and-pop businesses to be able to afford the pretty mass of rent in Sunnyvale, as we've talked about. Another way is to reevaluate the square footage requirements we have for retail, allowing for smaller spaces, which are actually in higher demand than our larger spaces and better fit the needs of a smaller business. So that's something that Sunny, that we can tweak on council and active, you know, I believe that will have a tangible effect on whether or not we're able to get retail at all.
Thank you. All right, next question, we'll start with Alyssa, and this is about transportation. Transportation is a concern in Sunnyvale. Where would you put your emphasis? VTA, pedestrian, bicycle routes, intersections, shuttles?
All of them. I used public transit as my primary mode of transportation for a lot of years, and I can tell you the greatest issue is increasing that ridership, because the way that we work with VT and Caltrain is you have to have the demand to have the increase in service, but the increase in service, you know, if it's not convenient, less people use it. So that's a challenge. We need to focus on creating more seamless transfers between pedestrian, bicycle, the train, and VTA. District Two is very lucky. This is the most transit-friendly district in the city, and we can take what we've learned in our community in terms of vibrancy and creating really strong connections between different modes of transportation to the rest of the city. I'm particularly excited about the shuttle that we're looking to onboard, especially with the kind of community support we have.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, when you talk about transportation, you've got to look at what, what you're going to accomplish by doing certain things. A shuttle may get a few people from here to there, but it's not going to cause the larger transportation issues. You know, we, in the nineteen eighties, when Lockheed was the big presence in our city, they took up over ninety percent of the north end of the city with their, their buildings and their company. And what the city was able to do with that was we were able to establish times that people could come in and times that people could come out. And that relieved a lot of congestion in regards to our roadways. Can we do something similar to that today? Not so much, because of the fact there are so many, there's so much diversity in regards to the number of employers that are out there now. But I think that we need to look at ways, most people aren't taking public transportation, because you don't get anywhere in a very timely manner.
Thank you. All right, so let's talk a little bit more about the shuttle. Jim, you'll be going first, and this is sixty seconds. It says, "A shuttle service is starting in Perry Park. What are the possibilities of expanding that to the rest of the city?"
Well, I think that that we need to, we need to try to Perry Park is a good place to start, but we need to incorporate other areas of the city to see if it's viable there. And the more viability that we can prove, the more, more the program is going to be used. So what we got to look at is, you know, yes, okay, in Perry Park, but we also have to look at what's, what can be done up in the Moffett Park area, as well as the neighborhoods in the southern part of our city.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Yeah, thank you. The Perry Park example is really interesting, because we had something coming online, and then COVID happened. And this was one of the things we had to put on pause, because the demand simply wasn't there, because it was primarily a shuttle for those who were traveling to and from work. After COVID, we've seen people stay remote or only doing in-office days part of the time, and often moving out of the area, because it's really expensive to live here, and if you have the option, you may not. Cupertino and Santa Clara have started engaging in a partnership with a company called Via that operates a shuttle system. And Sunnyvale has an opportunity to jump in and be part of that partnership. It's both a cost-sharing initiative and something that we're able to get to places like the Senior Center, helping kids get to school from north and north to south Sunnyvale, like to Fremont High School. So really excited to engage with the community on what that might look like, and we have an awesome city manager and awesome city staff that can help us think about how to navigate that partnership piece.
Thank you. All right, next topic is the budget. So Alyssa, you'll go first on this one. Sunnyvale's budget process is a point of pride. Are there any changes or improvements you would make to the process?
Man, our budget process is kind of the gold standard of the whole region. We've been covered in the media of saying we have one of the healthiest budgets in the area, and we came out of COVID, and we've recovered, and we've been able to do that because of our process. One piece that I have talked to our former Finance Director, now City Manager, Tim Kirby, about is when we have the budget slides up or have the budget presented, is to have it in some more digestible chunks to make it easier for the layperson, the, you know, regular resident to understand, and that's including specifying what those acronyms mean. There are so many acronyms, and just having that barrier can really reduce the ability of people to participate in that process. So when I think about our budget process, you want to get more people involved, and so you need to make this less complicated for those who, like myself, who spend a lot of time doing it.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, one of the things that I think that I can do to make an impact on our budgetary process is to have community meetings within my district. You know, to have people come to me and tell me what their interests are, how their, the budget affects them, what they would like us to see money spent on. And I think that that's a very important way of trying to zero in on where the budget should go. You know, the wonderful thing about the city of Sunnyvale is we prognosticate our budget twenty years out. So we're not, when we come into a budget year, there's not a lot of extra money, and we're not, we're not selling the Coliseum to, you know, to pay for, for law enforcement. We're actually fairly well zeroed in on what we need to do. And it's after that zeroing that we need to make sure that we are placing our extra dollars in, in ways that'll best serve our community.
Well, thank you. Yeah, so another question on the budget, and Jim, you'll go first on this one. What is one thing Sunnyvale is funding that you would work to stop funding if elected?
Well, one of the things that the city council is currently discussing is having a monetary fund that they can give people money. Actually, just hand out the money. And I think that that is a very poor way of handling our tax dollars. A lot of the people that I've met along the campaign trail feel the same way. But I do, you know, and, and I'm sure Alyssa agrees with us, we need to do things, you know, to be able to financially secure people's lives. But I believe that we should get something for that. People should do something for that. That's what President Roosevelt did during the nineteen thirties and ending the, ending the problems that we had back then.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah. For every dollar we allocate to addressing homelessness is a dollar I wish I wasn't spending. And my goal as a council member is to make it so that we can live in a world where it is not necessary for the city of Sunnyvale to have to spend tax dollars to address this issue because it's solved, because people are not homelessness, homeless, not because we aren't addressing the issue. I really wish we did not need to spend the money to keep people from dying on our streets, which I I feel personally responsible for in some ways. I feel ashamed every time that happens and that motivates me to do more. But we need to do more on that now in order to come to the point where that is not something that we have to do or any city needs to do. Because and there's a lot of different ways that we can work toward that goal, but I wish that was not an issue in our society as a whole, but it is unfortunately.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So next topic is similar to where you're going here. What strategies would you prioritize for addressing and supporting unhoused populations? And Alyssa, you go first.
Oh, thank you. From almost day one on council, I have been just throwing ideas out there and I'm really happy to say that we've gone from very close to zero dollars from the actual city engagement. We we were contributing to Sunnyvale Community Services. Wonderful organization, we still do. But we weren't directly involved until the, I started my term in this these past two councils. We've gone from zero to almost a million dollars. So the ways that I want to prioritize that money is increasing our staff capacity in the city to coordinate with the county on issues like safe parking, having a sanctioned encampment so that people can be safer if they're working outdoors or living outdoors, I'm sorry. And then also considering solutions like was mentioned, UBI, keeping people from becoming homeless in the first place, also inclement weather shelters and looking into having a special set aside for using our contract with We Hope to focus on families with young children who are in this terrible situation.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim?
I think that as Alyssa stated, that we need to do as much as we can to take care of the population that can't necessarily take care of themselves. And, you know, that means working with the city, the county, the other cities that surround us and working in a fashion where we can all work together to to look at and solve the problems that are facing the people that are living on the streets and in their cars. And then we also need to do, do things that we used to, we need to get our legislators in the state Capitol, you know, to do things that make this a easier job to to handle. And, you know, the state of California has done a lot of different things in trying to address these kinds of problems. And the governor has been very good about, you know, now saying that when the state gives you money to accomplish something, but they want to make sure that what you're doing is appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we'll talk about the basic income program. So Jim, you'll go first. You'll have sixty seconds. Sunnyvale is considering the implementation of a basic income program, as you both mentioned. What do you think are the pros and cons, as well as how will it be funded? Also, how would you measure the effectiveness and the sustainability of that type of program?
Well, the only way that we're going to appropriately take care of a problem that is currently in our community is to make sure that the people that are going to receive a benefit are willing, worthy of getting that benefit. And when I talk about worthy, that doesn't mean that they have to have gold stars on on their chart or anything like that. But they need to do something, you know, for the community, such as work with some of our organizations that are cleaning our parks or doing other things. This goes back to the nineteen thirties when Roosevelt, you know, had all of his different programs that were out there to solve a lot of the dastardly economic conditions that existed. But he just didn't give money to people. He made them responsible and he made, he gave them responsibilities and that made them more responsible and they could look more towards a future for themselves and they're growing.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I want to be clear because this is a very expensive program to consider and there is no way that the city of Sunnyvale can sustain a program like this from our budget. So any resources we put to any kind of basic income program is going to need to come from state or federal grants. And that's, you know, actually working with legislators to get resources, something I've done professionally and something I've done while on council. As term, in terms of measuring success, it depends on what you're solving for. A basic income program is looking just to create a stopgap for people who are working and who are contributing to our community in some way. That goes, that studies show that goes to rent, that goes to buying new shoes, that goes to fixing your car. And so if you're looking to measure that, there are ways to go ahead and just see broadly where those resources are spent using a debit card and see where the need is in the community, where we can continue to focus our efforts.
Thank you. All right, changing topics. Now we'll talk about the climate. How would you support, and sorry, Alyssa, you'll go first. How would you support the revised Climate Action Plan and champion regional climate change initiatives?
Yeah. The biggest discussion and change to our climate plan, although there was many, but the one that comes to mind that had the most discussion was having a more ambitious goal to lower VMT. Because we know that emissions from automobiles is the largest contributor in our community to climate change. And so therefore, we talked about transportation and getting people out of single occupancy vehicles. So when we, you know, we said, we set a goal and we need to be more ambitious in order to both meet state requirements and make a tangible impact on that largest contributor. Now, people travel between Sunnyvale and other cities. So these VMT goals will require working with different municipalities using industry partners and partnering with say Cupertino and Santa Clara on a Via Shuttle. So I really want to focus on that going forward. It's very dual.
Thank you. Jim?
Back when I was on the council in two thousand and eleven, I was introduced to a program that was designed to overcome a lot of the obstacles that we see. You know, if you get onto a bus now in the city of Sunnyvale, it takes you forty-five minutes to an hour to get to Palo Alto. If I get into my car, I can get there in ten or fifteen minutes. Now, the program that I was introduced to was called Pod Cars. And what it is, is an above-ground rail that's operated by solar energy. And what the rails do is, you know, once you get into a car, you push in your destination and it takes you directly to that area. It's one of the cheaper ways of building transportation, you know, that get people around any and all parts of our city. Now, it can be built along our curbs. The pods hang over the the city streets. They can be built at an extremely efficient rate. And we can get them especially to our kids up in Lakewood Village and Fairwood to get them transportation that gets down to Fremont High School. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I know these are big topics and sorry, we don't have more time for them, but thank you for understanding. Let's see, Jim, you'll go first on this one. What is your position on using artificial turf in the city parks and athletic fields? And what do you feel are some of the pros and cons?
Well, I'm not in favor of using the classic fields, you know. I became aware of a lot of the information regarding using artificial turf through discussions that were held at the city council. You know, when there was some discussion about putting more artificial turf in the different park areas. And after considering all the information and how artificial turf can generate things into the, into the air that aren't necessarily good for you, they're hard to play on. You know, they don't necessarily provide the the kind of resources that are necessary. Although I know it's cheaper, you know, to be able to have artificial turf and not have to maintain it like we do regular turf, but I don't think it's the right way to go.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you. I'm on record and in agreement with what I believe is a lot of my colleagues that we as a city are moving away from using artificial turfs, especially in our parks. And the reason why, well, number one, there's a lot of microplastics and different chemicals that get into our water system and it's unknown what effects that has on the kids and people who play on it. So residents generally aren't comfortable with it. And as a mom, I'm not super comfortable with it either. Also, it creates a heat island effect. So one of the side benefits is that these are fields that can be used for athletics all year round. It would not be safe to go and play on that field on a day like today. Some of those benefits, though, are that it, you know, is potentially easier to maintain, although Sunnyvale Employees Association has talked to me about it is not easy to maintain and the workers are not comfortable going ahead and working with those chemicals. So there are a lot more cons than pros and so I'm really happy with the direction we're going in.
Thank you. Alyssa will go first on this. Next one, we're going to talk about Prop Five. It asks the voters, should local bonds for affordable housing and public infrastructure approval rate drop from two-thirds down to fifty-five percent? Do you support or oppose Prop Five and why?
Yeah, I I support it because I'm somebody who is very serious about having the resources to give to support the building of more housing as a city and meeting our responsibilities to the state. And I'm also somebody who's really serious about improving our infrastructure. I, I, you know, I hope we talk about it later, but we have a library bond on the ballot this year and the polling that we had is really tight. If Prop Five passes, we are much more likely to get a new library for our residents which has so many benefits and we, cities are losing opportunities because that two-thirds threshold is really difficult to meet for even very worthy projects. So I believe that if you're serious about tackling the issue of the housing crisis, if you're serious about wanting to update infrastructure in your city, Prop Five is something that I think is a pretty straightforward yes.
Thank you, Jim.
Well, for many years I've been a big supporter of the Jarvis Dan. I was a supporter of Jarvis Dan back in the nineteen seventies when it was first initiated. But quite honestly, we're in a new day and a new age. And while two-thirds vote is a wonderful accomplishment, if you can get it, it it has reached the limit. And yes, I do support Prop Position Five. It still gives us more than fifty plus one. And I think that it opens things so that we can get more things accomplished in a timely and efficient manner. So I'm a yes on five.
Thank you. So let's talk about Measure E. For the library, it says, should voters approve a two-hundred-and-ninety-million-dollar general obligation bond to develop a new one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-square-foot library in Sunnyvale? Do you support or oppose Measure E and why? And we'll start with Jim.
Well, I oppose the library bond. I think the two-hundred-and-ninety-million dollars of tax money is a to be used in a lot of different ways, in better ways to service our city. Now, let's address the issue of the, of the library. The library building, as it's currently standing, is a very efficient building. It works. There's nothing wrong with it. The building's not falling apart. What we do need is we need to make some additions to that building. We need to add space for children's programs. We add, need to add space where we can put the computers for people that need to come off the street and use computers. We need to add space that will make the library more efficient and we need to accomplish those things that are currently sort of holding us back.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah, thank you. I was really proud to to be a yes vote when we voted on council to go ahead and move forward with this ballot initiative. The staff working at the library would disagree and saying that our current library is not able to meet the technological needs of this current population. And there's also issues in terms of potential seismic work and there has been a number of leaks in several years, as I understand. Most of all, in order to get those space to accommodate things like having more rooms for events and in different programs for kids especially, we're going to have to build a new one because we're not able, you know, we're going to have to go ahead and and build a new one eventually. This has been around for a long time. And so the highest library use is actually Gen Z. And their needs are different than the needs that happened when we built the original library. So I'm excited about it. But yeah.
Thank you. All right. Alyssa, you'll go first on this next question. How will you make yourself available to residents once you're elected as a council member?
Yeah, I am so excited to re, re bring back my office hours, ala Larry Klein. He inspired me to do that. And typically I would meet with residents just at the Bean Scene twice a week for for the first part of my term. This last year was a little weird with maternity and pregnancy. So I'm looking forward to starting that again when I come back in about a week or so. And then another thing that I do is I have a Calendly and this is some, you know, a tech or an app that allows residents to access my calendar directly. They get on that calendar, they can choose between Zoom or in person. And so it's it's a way to be super responsive and efficient with that. I also often give residents, I love giving residents my phone number and many reach out to me about immediate issues all the way from sidewalks or to bigger issues of their concern. So there are a lot of different ways to do it, always looking for ways to continue to increase that engagement because I know that doesn't quite work for everyone.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, you know, I pledge that once elected, I will make sure that we have neighborhood meetings in various parts of the district. That doesn't necessarily mean at a coffee shop or a public building, but in a neighborhood where family open their doors, you know, to bring in twenty or thirty people. And the importance of that is, you know, for me as a council person to listen to what the concerns are of the people that are living in my district. And then because I have a knowledge of how our government works and how to make that things happen, I can go back and I can start working on the problems and making, and I can address their issues to them. And I think that that's the most important thing that I can do in my entire platform.
Thank you. All right, next question. We'll start with Jim. Attracting new people to run for local city councils is crucial for maintaining a vibrant and representative local government. What innovative idea or ideas do you have to attract new talent to run for city council?
Well, we have to make ourselves available, you know, to people within the community so that they can learn about what the job is and how to accomplish its goals. And some of that can be done through the community meetings that I'm talking about. A lot of it can be done by addressing, you know, high school students as well as as college age groups. We can also, you know, be involved with a lot of our businesses that are within our community and and looking for leaderships that might, leaders that might be available there. And there are a variety of other, there's a variety of people that are involved in different organizations that are active in our community, you know, where we can find, you know, good people. Such as Sunnyvale Community Services and such as the League of Women Voters.
Thank you for that. Alyssa?
Yeah, thank you. I will first say that I would have not run for office if it were not the city moving to districts. So for many cities, that is still an innovative solution, although we in Sunnyvale opted to do that without getting sued and having to pay for that lawsuit. Something else that is really important is people often don't see themselves in a position of leadership if they don't see themselves in their leaders. And I'm proud that every single election cycle that I've been on council, we keep breaking our records in terms of having the most diverse council. We may have a majority women of color council just this coming year. May have a majority women of color council just this coming year. We need to think about uh going outside of the traditional uh pipelines to leadership. So that includes reaching out to those who live in multifamily housing. Those who are in high school and college and get their interest started earlier. Um in building that pipeline uh where you don't normally get it. And honestly, it also comes down to knowing when to step back. Pull someone up and say it's your turn. And I'm going to support you in it being your turn. And that's what it means to to continue the leadership here in Sunnyvale.
Thank you. Great. Our next question is, what is the best part of our downtown area? And what is one of the most important things you plan to work on to help downtown function even better in the next four years? And we will start with Alyssa.
Do I have to pick just one? Um I live downtown and I live downtown because uh. You know, I I have a big age difference between my kids and my oldest daughter is a teenager. And she's able to go and safely. Walk to everywhere she needs to be and hang out with her with her friends. And that goes for everyone who lives downtown. It is an incredibly vibrant community and what works really well is, I mentioned the transit opportunities. But also our commitment to small business and the fact that we came out of COVID with one of the lowest vacancy rates of any downtown in the area. Something that we can always work on is bringing more people in during the week. And I think we're going to have a big opportunity to do that when we have tenancy in the new apartment buildings we have. But also that means we need to focus on balancing that priority with teneting the new um. You know, office particularly to build in those business lunch um. Opportunities for the restaurants because it can be really different to difficult to sustain.
Thank you. Jim.
Well, working with the Downtown Association and uh the Down Murphy Street is. Probably one of the most enjoyable and uh positive things that I've experienced in life. And I think that we need to work closely with not only the Downtown Association, but the Chamber of Commerce. And and emphasizing the importance of uh what our downtown is. Then we also need to look at uh what's being done in the other portions of the downtown that are being developed. You know, we see a lot of high-rise development now and we're seeing a lot of development along McKinley. And that's wonderful. We're seeing new shops come in, a variety of new things that people can do and see. And uh those are the two organizations that I would like to work closely with to make sure that we do. The best thing that we can do for our downtown. And we also need to be very careful in regards to. The density that we build around downtown because there are areas that are being overcome by traffic.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, this is one of my favorite questions and you'll you'll see why. We'll start with Jim. What is your favorite thing about Sunnyvale? And your district. And I know we've already kind of gone that road, but if you could expand upon that, please.
I think that we talked about it just now and that's the the downtown area and uh Murphy Street.
Good. And so how about you feel like that's true for Sunnyvale and your district? Or you just want to use that for one of the, just for your district or?
Oh, just for my, yeah, yeah, ju- just for my district, that would be the uh my number one priority. But you know, there are a lot of things. Uh that we can do in the city to enhance uh further development. And again, that's. Working with the Chamber of Commerce, it's working with the different uh neighborhoods. And also uh being conscious of what's happening with our commercial centers. And you know, that means up and down El Camino Real. So we've got to find out what's going on. There and what's behind their efforts and where they would like to go.
Great, thank you. Alyssa.
And could you, because I just want to make sure I'm answering the question directly because it was so similar to the last one. Could you repeat it so that I make sure that I'm uh. Fully answering what you asked.
Absolutely. So what is your favorite thing about Sunnyvale? And then what's your favorite thing about District Two?
I really love how you see people from all different backgrounds, all different life experiences. Living right next to each other um and getting along and being neighbors. And you can see this and you think. I think to myself, if only every community could be like this, this, the world will be a better place. And I've seen that only get better. I went to Cupertino Middle School and Homestead High School, so um. I only see us becoming more inclusive. Um something I love about just the downtown's. Area generally is the Heritage Neighborhood where I live right adjacent to, as you can see. Apartments, duplexes, triplexes, single-family homes, all on one street. So you're, that really exemplifies. That idea of having people from different income backgrounds, different um. Levels of affordability, living together, which ultimately creates better understanding between people who may not normally.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, we are up to the last question. And you've got ninety seconds to answer this one. We're going to start with Alyssa. And this one is, what question do you wish we had asked during this forum? And then please take time to answer that question.
Yeah, I think that there is, there is a big opportunity in this forum specifically because you're talking to two people who have been on council before. So asking. What is your proudest accomplishment? When you did surf would be a great question. And and for me, I will answer twice. I mentioned before, I'll just plug again, that going from a very. Um almost non-existent direct engagement and homelessness from from that very low dollar amount that wasn't S C S specific. To almost a million dollars. Huge uh win I felt in allocating uh new staff and creating staff positions for that. And then my other was updating a policy regarding um what it, the requirements needed. To be met to use traffic calming measures on residential streets. It had been over twenty years since we updated it. There are many new ways to slow down traffic. Um and especially in District Two, as mentioned, that. We do get a lot of cut through and there is speeding and traffic issues. So this is a tangible way to address those issues. I nerded out with Kent about this. We were able to get it through and it's something that council i- is working on finalizing after a study issue. So I'm really proud to have just brought that. Um issue that will make uh our community safer for kids playing outside, for pedestrians, cyclists. And and anyone who comes and visits our downtown. It's really important to have um just a safe. Roadways to um enjoy and utilize.
Thank you. Jim.
Well, I think one of the things that has uh. Impacted me the most is some of the density or the questions about density uh should should have been more. Addressed. And what I found in uh working with a variety of citizens group. Is that uh some of our density programs that we built in the downtown area. Have caused a variety of different uh different problems for the community. Uh as we all know, at one time, uh the north side of Matilda Avenue was a residential district, single-family home to duplexes. And we've now put in uh major four-story uh apartment buildings. And unfortunately, what we did when we did that. Was we cut the parking allowance down. So that the builders didn't have to build as much parking for facilities. And what we found is that the uh Charles Street in particular has been inundated with. Uh parking problems and disa- uh disapprovals of of activities and you know, crosswords being exchanged. And you know, speeding was another problem that I've uh become very much aware of. You know, so I think that the. We need to take into consideration a lot of these issues that I've just talked about in building our more dense community.
Thank you. Well, thank you both. This was really a great conversation and take taking the time to talk about the different one. Yes, sorry.
Do I get to answer that question too? Or no, it was just, oh, answer it yourself. Nevermind.
Exactly, yes. So.
I was excited to talk about it.
Okay, good. No, that was that was his question, but yes, we can talk about it another time. Thank you. Great. And so if I could ask Debbie, if you'd please pull the slide back up. We want to make sure that. Voters um have access to as much information as possible. So I wanted to remind you that there. The candidates have ways of reaching them. Alyssa has Alyssa dash Cisneros at dot com for her website. And Jim has his email, so you can reach him directly. So um. Thank you again for participating. If you don't mind staying on a little bit longer, I'd like to show a few more resources to. The audience and we will then uh finish the evening here. So next slide, please. Great. So just so you're aware, the League of Women Voters for Cupertino Sunnyvale is doing all of these forums during this election cycle. So we're trying to give a chance for people to hear from the school boards, the city council, the mayor. Then we're also going to talk about the ballot measures. So you can see, take a screenshot of this. It's also at our website, L W V C S dot org slash election dash forums. Um I do want to point out on October sixteenth at seven P M, we're going to do a Zoom talk on the ballot measures themselves. So there's. Ten state ballot measures. Well, we'll explain the basics of them. We're going to talk about the money behind the ballot. Who's in favor, who's against, and what they're saying. And we are also going to go over uh a few of the local ballot measures. Not every one of them, but a few of the local ballot measures as well. So we encourage you to uh help us get the word out and attend that on October sixteen. You can go to the next slide, please. Once again, more nonpartisan election information. We've got our site, thevotefouroneone.org, cavotes.org. The voter guide from the Secretary of State, ballotpedia.org also has a lot of great information. And the Legislative Analyst Office has a lot more details on about measures that you can learn about. Next slide, please. So as you all know, Election Day is Tuesday, November fifth. Please take time to vote. You can vote in advance. You can't vote late, so make sure you vote by November fifth. Next slide, please. Thank you again, candidates. It was delightful working with you this evening. Thank you to my league members that helped make this forum possible and thank all of you for attending. Do please help us get the word out on these forums. We need an educated and informed uh electorate. And if you would like to join the league, once again, L W V C S dot org. Next slide, please. So this concludes our webinar. Once again, the this video will be on our website, posted within about forty-eight hours. So thank you so much for joining us tonight. Have a good evening.